Good evening. On behalf of Lee County Schools, I'd like to call it tonight's Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, I would like to welcome everybody to the meeting and also at this time, I'd also like to have a moment of silence. So please join us. Thank you. Now if everyone will please join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, the board will be reorganizing for the coming year and because of that, the board will now choose a chair for the coming year. And I will open it up for nominations from the board.
Dr. Bowen, I'd like to nominate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Sandra Bowen to serve as president of this board for the coming year.
Dr. Smith has nominated Sandra Bowen as chair.
I'm sorry, Dr. Ryan. I was nominating Pam Sutton.
Ms. Walmick is nominating Pam Sutton. Are there any other nominations for chair?
So make a motion that we close nominations.
That's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion is closed. We will go in the order that everybody was nominated. All those in favor of Sandra Bowen as chair, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have five votes. All those in favor of Pam Sutton for chair, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Count two, three. Sorry. As I. So as I count the votes, Mr. Ross and.
The numbers are, I'll throw my vote to Pam.
Okay. Four, four to three. Do you agree? At this time, the board has elected Sandra Bowen to be chair for the coming year for Lee County Schools, Board of Education. And from now on, I will turn the gavel over to you, Ms. Bowen, to run the remainder of the meeting and choose a vice chair.
At this time, I'd open the floor for nominations for the vice chair of the Lee County School Board. I'd like to nominate Sherri Walmack, please. We have a nomination for Sherri Walmack.
Vice Chair, I'd like to motion to nominate Christine Hilliard, Vice Chair.
We have a nomination for Christine Hilliard. Are there other nominees at this time? Hearing none, we'll close nominations. At this time, we'll vote all those in favor of Sherri Walmack as Vice Chair. Please signify by saying aye and raising your right hand. Aye. Thank you. Those in favor of Christine Hilliard, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
At this time, the Hilliard has been elected on a five-two vote to continue as the Vice Chair of Lee County School Board. At this time, I open the floor for public comments. I have four commenters on the agenda for this evening. We have up first, each commenter is reminded, you get three minutes to share your thoughts with the board. And at the termination of your three-minute time, I'll call time if we get there. Often, we don't. And we look forward to hearing your comments and concerns this evening. First up, I have Mr. Allen Rommel. If you give me just a moment, Mr. Rommel, I did not set my timer.
Sure.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Thanks. My name's Allen Rommel, and I'm here to talk about the superintendent contract extension that was approved in closed session last month. Policy seventy-four twenty states with reference to superintendent contract, and I'm paraphrasing from my three-minute limit. Any subsequent extensions to the superintendent's contract will be voted upon by the board in open session. So why was this done in the dark and not according to policy? I sent this question via email to everybody on this school board on November twenty-fourth, and I never got a response. The superintendent is the CEO of the school system, or perhaps the head coach, if you will. So it seems like this open session vote would provide an opportunity to highlight significant accomplishments that led to that contract extension. Having no information provided by the board, I searched and found some data on publicschoolsreview.com. And this thing has data through 2019, so I guess there's no unfair COVID-related data perhaps. The superintendent was hired in April of 2013, and at that time, Lee County was ranked around number one-twenty-five out of three-hundred-and-five North Carolina school districts overall. So we were a little above average. And then in 2019, Lee County had fallen to one-ninety-one out of three-oh-five, so below average and almost the bottom third. Math and reading proficiency and graduation rate were all flat, were slightly down during that time as well. So the data that I found shows a less than mediocre performance at best. Maybe the board has more detailed information about that, but this is what I've got to go on because the board did not share any information with the public at the time of that vote. Your intentional lack of transparency in a process that is clearly set is one that should happen in the open leads people to believe some shady business is going on, especially when the superintendent is the highest-paid school employee at about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand a year plus benefits. So it's also disturbing to me that the board is so strict with their COVID, their state COVID recommendations. But you guys are willing to bend and break written county rules that the board created and is supposed to be governed by. So that lack of integrity is pretty clear, and I think that we deserve better. Our county deserves a board that is transparent in decisions that affect our most precious asset, which is our kids. So I'm going to leave the board with the request to provide Lee County parents with the following. What specific goals were met that merits the recent contract extension? What educational improvements have been realized? And what are the new goals that came with that contract extension? Because that's how accountability is supposed to work. And I look forward to the board providing that basic information. Thank you.
A point of clarity, Mr. Rommel, I just caught the top two that you're requesting, specific goals, educational improvements, and what was your third?
The new goals that came with the contract extension.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting a phone call from one of our schools. I'm trying to, there we go, cancel it so that I can get back to the timer. My apologies. Next up, I have Chance Dahl.
Thank you. Once again, I kind of tonight because over the last month, my last visit here, and getting to know you guys and listening to some of what's being said, I'm just curious, which one of you lives for blindfolding, lives for masking, lives for speech restriction, sensory deprivation? Which one of you is that person? Is it the one in the group that has voted to mask children instead of paying attention to the academic successes or failures in your school district? Is it all of you? If this is not about control and dominance, then why on earth would a board member have the authority or the position to vote to practice their own habits on the lives of seven-year-olds, twelve-year-olds? The eighteen-year-olds might bring this individual joy to think about, but I'm worried about the ones that are in that five-to-eighteen bracket. And I'm wondering if this board has done anything at all to research to make sure that you have put every single fail-safe possible to protect every single one of your children that one of your board members may have access to? Or if you have just passed it off to your attorney and said, hey, attorney, can you make this go away? We don't want to deal with it publicly, and we're going to continue voting to dominate children. Is it you? Is it you? Is it you? Which one of you is it? That is mind-boggling. I cannot believe in a county such as Lee County, a group of adults with knowingly aid and abet a person who lives that kind of lifestyle and then grant them authority and access to your children. You should all be ashamed of yourselves, every single one of you. And I don't know what's up with the American flag, but that is a disgrace. You guys need to check yourselves before you put children in harm's way beyond what you have already done.
At this time, I have Lisa Reagan.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well done. Lisa Reagan, two-sixty-four Lanier Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. I have been coming to this school board for several years now, and I have been very alone a lot of times, even attacked by the admin over the Hans Building. But anyway, I am so thankful that there are more people standing up to speak because we see you. We see you, and you, and you, and you, and you. And we see these ladies too, working really, really, really hard. But it takes four, right? It takes four more, and then you do whatever you want. And whatever you want is coming down from the top of that government down. We didn't make this country this way. Go back and take a little history class. We're supposed to be ruled by the people. We elect you to be here for our town, for our kids, not to accept whatever comes down from the state board or whatever comes down from the teachers' unions. You guys are a disappointment. People are noticing. And some of us notice a lot more than others. And there's an election time coming up. And I'm so glad there are more people noticing. And it encourages me to continue to really go back out here and do something because I'm going to tell you, standing up here so many times and you guys just look at the people standing here at the microphone, and then you could care less about anything they're saying because you're not going to acknowledge them. You're not going to answer the questions, and you're going to do whatever you want to do. Four more, that's. But that's not necessarily what's right for this community. You disgust me. I pray that our Lord give us better guidance for our children in this community than you. In Jesus's name, amen.
And last on the list is Mr. Jim Walmack.
Yeah, Jim Walmack, sixteen-fifteen Bloom Trail Road here in Sanford. The North Carolina General Assembly, the people's representatives in Raleigh, create the legislation that administers and funds public education in the state. And what does the General Assembly care about? Achievement and growth. They want you to measure performance, not the kind of wet finger in the air, feel good about yourself, everybody gets a trophy, social, emotional crap that circumvents just about everything that matters. The General Assembly has given you, you folks, the Lee County School Board and your central office, the statutory requirement to educate our children with an emphasis on annual achievement guidelines against a clear set of academic standards, and then year-over-year improvement measured as growth. So what does the Lee County School Board, what have they focused on for the last eight years? Well, according to your board meetings, it hasn't been about achievement and growth. Not one chair or vice chair of this board over the last eight years has placed the slightest bit of emphasis on these two things, the two things the state says are most important. Frankly, the only objective thing your superintendent talks about every meeting is Clean School of the Month Award. That makes him an expert on janitorial services, not on educating children. Is it any wonder that all three of our middle schools and both traditional high schools are nationally ranked as below average, according to Zillow.com? Yes, check it out. Every home in Lee County, every home, has at least two out of three failing schools associated with that address. So is it any wonder that middle and upper-class families do not want to move to Lee County? Not unless they want to parent their children through education, or unless you want to put them in private Christian school. Is it any wonder that last year alone, Lee County Schools slipped another seven places among the hundred-and-fifteen school districts in the state on composite ACT benchmark performance? We are now seventy-fifth in the state, eighteen places below our ranking, but this superintendent took over, eighteen places lower. How did that merit a contract extension? Is it any wonder that this superintendent's eight-year tenure, Lee County ADM, our daily enrollment, has dropped by almost a thousand students? Despite the fact our county has grown by a thousand students. Clearly, parents do not want what this board and this central office are producing. Is it any wonder that dozens of respected business leaders in this community are pleading with me to find school board candidates who will get rid of this superintendent? Yet, there you are, one month ago, extending the superintendent's contract for over two more years. Not one shred of objective justification for that action. While we taxpayers and parents and voters have taken notice, you are doing irreparable harm to our children and our ability to grow this county. You are doing irreparable harm, your feckless and reckless contract extension, and the voters of this county will hold every one of you accountable. Mark my word.
That concludes the public comments portion of tonight's meeting. I have requested or passed the, oh, sorry, the Lee County Vision and Policy Statement twenty-one-twenty to different board members, if you would, at this time. Who has a Lee County Vision statement? I have that. Sorry. The Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. Thank you. And now, policy twenty-one-twenty, the code of ethics.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board recognizes collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflict of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation, false indication of facts, and we must avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, we have the agenda before us for the twelve-fourteen regular board meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
I respectfully ask that we add a reconsideration of the superintendent's contract extension based upon the fact that it was not conducted according to school board policy. And I'd like to add, add an item to the new business of a full discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to add an item under new business. That would be a number seven, a review or discussion of the superintendent's contract. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, as it appears that this will be voted down, I definitely feel there should be a discussion. I would like to read something to the people in the audience who may not understand what's going on. I'm going to read to you an exact quote.
We'll hold the discussion for the actual time when it gets to the new business. I know, I thought, yeah, we just have to put it.
When it's on the agenda or not?
Oh, I am. That's the next step.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, for placing this on the agenda. All in favor of placing it on the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, that sounds like three. All opposed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is a three, four. The motion has failed to place on the agenda. Ms. Walmack, I would encourage you to have your comments prepared at the board member comments at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, let me scroll back up. Okay, are there any other additions or amendments for the agenda for this evening? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as it stands, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
At this time, the agenda is approved. Before us, we have the minutes of the regular board meeting of November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. I entertain a motion to approve amendment, amendments.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, there is a correction that needs to be on the limits. I'm pretty sure that Jan Tard did not speak in favor of optional mask.
I don't think, I don't think the minutes indicate that she is in favor of mask optional. I think it's just the topic that she wrote on the sheet at the time.
All the others on that, that is confusion because all the others she spoke, they have it whether they're for optional mask or not, so just a poll.
Okay. Do you have a motion to make that amendment to change this?
Yes, ma'am. We change the minutes and correct them according to what you discussed.
Okay. We have a motion to change item number seven, Jan mask, to say mask mandate as opposed to mask option. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Was that information taken from the public comment sheet? Is that where that came from? Just to clarify, you don't want to change how it's written, if that's what was written on the public comment sign-in sheet? Based on the way I'm reading it, I think that it was probably on the public comments, just saying mask, probably discussions. I have no objection to changing it to say mask mandate. Other questions and concerns? Thank you. Thank you. Hearing that, we have a motion to amend the minutes to make that correction. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? There is none. That amendment will be made at this point. With the amendment, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes of the Board meeting of November ninth, twenty-twenty-one?
Yes, ma'am. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the amendments.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of the regular Board meeting of November ninth, twenty-twenty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We'll move to the report items on our agenda. We are pleased to have with us this evening Mr. Daniel Smith, representing our audit, and he has the twenty-twenty, twenty, it's so hard to say those numbers, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit report. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Good to see you all again. I think each of you should have already received a copy of the audit report, and hopefully you've had time to read through it. It's fairly lengthy, so I'll be going over the pages from the report that I think are of the most importance to you and overseeing the finances of the school district. And our audit covers two main areas that we're required to issue reports on. The financial section covers the first fifty-eight pages of the report, followed by the compliance section on pages fifty-nine through seventy. And for the financial section, we perform an audit of the actual finances of the school system, which includes the amounts and the financial disclosures that you see in the report. And in auditing the finances of the school system, we perform various procedures to ascertain that the district's finances are reasonably stated and free from any sort of material errors or misstatements. And any differences or unusual relationships noted in our testing is investigated and looked into to ascertain to ourselves that the finances are properly stated. And we're happy to report on pages one and two of the audit report is our financial statement audit opinion letter, which is a clean, unmodified opinion. That's exactly what you want to receive. And this lets you know that we do, in fact, feel that the financial statements are free from any sort of material misstatement and reasonably stated. And the compliance section of the report starts on page fifty-nine. And there are three letters we issued that are included here related to the various detailed testing we have to perform for internal controls of the district and on the district's compliance with various state and federal laws and regulations. And these laws and regulations primarily relate to all of the state and federal funding that flows through the district. And we were required to perform a good bit more testing this past year due to all of the federal COVID funding that the district received. And we're happy to report that all three of these letters are also clean, unmodified reports, which basically means that we feel the district finances were used properly, that the amounts were spent in accordance with the budgets adopted by the Board of Education, and also lets you know there were no findings or question costs reported in the audit report. So these four letters collectively represent the highest level of assurance that the school district can receive in an external audit of its financial statements. Okay, if you would, let's turn over to page twelve of the report. We'll look at the district's general fund fund balance as of June thirtieth. Page twelve shows the balance sheet of the governmental funds as of June thirtieth. And we'll be focusing on the first column. And if you look toward the top, the assets of the general fund as of June thirtieth were seven million seventy-three thousand two eighty-six. And that amount includes cash and cash equivalents of six million two ninety-six oh twenty-two. And there in the middle of the page, the general fund had liabilities of a million nine eighty-seven four oh two. If you take your asset minus liabilities, you get the district ending fund balance of June thirtieth, which was five million eighty-five eight eighty-four. And that amount represents an increase of two-point-two million over the amount of fund balance that was reported at June thirtieth of twenty-twenty. And this improvement in fund balance is good to see, although it was an unusual budget year. I think due to COVID, there were quite a few expenses that you normally would budget for that you didn't incur. And that helped for the district to be able to add to its fund balance last year. And then on top of that, the unanticipated expenses related to COVID, y'all received all that extra federal funding that you were able to use to help offset those costs. So those two factors together are what combined to help the district be able to add the two-point-two million to its fund balance last year. And most all of the districts that we audited this past year saw their fund balances increased by, you know, these relative similar amounts. So Lee County Schools is not alone in seeing its fund balance go up this past year. Your unassigned fund balance is now at about twenty-five point four percent of general fund expenditures. And as I've mentioned to you in previous years, although the state does not mandate minimum fund balance levels to LEAs, it does require other local governments in the state to maintain an eight percent minimum fund balance level. So after several years of the district's unassigned fund balance being either right at or below that eight percent level, I think the district's current fund balance is now at what we would consider a more adequate level for a district this size.
Do you have a number on that approximate?
Yeah, y'all are at about twenty-five percent now. And another thing we've been cautioning districts about is, and I'm sure you know this, is that that cost across the board have really been going up a lot. Health insurance costs, retirement rates just continue to go up, fuel costs, utility costs. So it's, you know, we feel as though it's a very good, wise budgeting strategy right now to try to build up your fund balance at this time. Because when those federal COVID funds expire here in a few years, you know, we just, you don't know what you're gonna be seeing from a budgetary standpoint and what you're gonna be faced with. So it'll be good at that time to have some extra fund balance and cash reserves built up in case they're needed. And reading across on the bottom, that next-to-last line that shows your ending fund balance. Okay, the State Public School Fund and Federal Grants Fund, they, neither one of those carry fund balance. Y'all spend those dollars when they're received.
All right, Dale, can you tell me where you are? I've lost you.
Okay, next-to-last line from the bottom.
Page twelve?
Yeah, page twelve.
Okay, I'm in the right place then.
Okay. Do you see the two dashes there for the State? Okay. And again, both of those funds, they always carry a zero fund balance. Y'all spend those dollars in the year that they're received. The restricted revenue fund had an ending fund balance of two million four thirty-four nine thirty-six. And the revenues that flow through this fund are primarily restricted. You've got NC pre-K revenues, Medicaid revenues, and some local private-type grants flow through there. You do have some unrestricted revenues that flow through there as well. You get some indirect cost revenue, tuition and fees revenue, so sales tax refund. So there is some unrestricted revenue that flows through this fund also. Your capital outlay fund had an ending fund balance of a million nine fifty-eight one seventy-six. And all of that fund balance is restricted for capital outlay purposes. And your individual schools combined had an ending fund balance of seven thirty-nine seven sixty-one. And that basically, each school has its own checking account. That basically is the ending cash balance for each school combined as of June thirtieth. So again, I think overall, the district is in very good financial condition with its governmental fund. Okay. Any questions on this page? Let's turn over to page fifty-eight, and we'll look at the school food service program. And page fifty-eight shows the revenues and expenditures of this program for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And if you look about three-quarters of the way down, the line that says net change in fund balance. And we'll be looking at the middle column, which shows the actual results for the year. The program reported a profit for the year of six-hundred-and-five thousand four twenty-seven. And in the previous year, the program reported a loss of approximately five-hundred-and-eighty thousand. So the program had a year-over-year improvement of about one-point-two million dollars. And as would be expected with the remote learning environment last year due to COVID, meal sales declined significantly. You can see at the top of the page, I think y'all had food sales of a thousand one sixty. The previous year, that was six-hundred-and-twenty thousand. But on the flip side of that, the district was allowed to feed all students free and reduced meals. So every student qualified. The federal government waived the normal restrictions on that. So your federal reimbursements, you can see y'all had four million two sixty-two nine oh five of federal reimbursements and grants there in the middle of the page. In the previous year, that number was three-point-two million. So your federal reimbursement revenue went up over a million dollars last year. And management was also able to reduce expenses by approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand last year. And then in addition to that, the program was able to pay two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand of indirect cost, which basically goes over to your local fund. So, you know, all in all, the program had an outstanding year. And I think we were here a year ago talking about that program had that big five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollar loss. Improvements needed to be made. And I think y'all brought in some consultants, and they helped management. And, you know, the program had a really good turnaround and is in very good financial condition now.
So did you not determine in that audit that that was because we had moved money from the food services over to the general fund? Do you remember why the ration was?
With indirect cost?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the indirect cost, most districts pay indirect cost if they can afford it. So y'all had paid it, but I think last year, y'all didn't pay any indirect costs. When I say last year, I mean the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty year.
And how does the local community and all the, like, the Christian United outreach, all these people who's bringing all the foods into the school, how would that affect this particular budget line item? Would you be watching that at all?
If it's not money flowing into the program, if it's just donated.
It's just constant.
Yeah, it would show up in here.
Okay.
Other than perhaps as savings, that's a possibility it could impact.
It would help you on the food cost side, usually. Because you wouldn't be having to buy that food. Any more questions on this page? And we also performed a good bit of testing at the individual schools, looking at their receipts and expressions and activity. And there were no significant issues noted in that testing. And we always note little minor items that we report to Ms. Jones and her staff for them to share with the bookkeepers and principals. But again, overall, it looked as though the bookkeepers were doing a good job out in the school. And there was a separate three-page letter that we issued that each of you should have received. And we call that a required communications letter. And it discusses that there were no difficulties or disagreements encountered in dealing with management during the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements noted, and there were no reportable issues noted during the audit. So this letter basically has boilerplate language and is what we would consider a clean report. And that was pretty much all I planned to cover. Again, I think overall, the audit went very smoothly. There were no major, or any issues noted, reportable issues noted in the audit. And the district, again, made significant financial improvements and appears to be in very good financial condition as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, would you be able to speak at all? I know you said that there were some requirements of some additional federal oversight of what we're generally calling COVID funds. Can you give us kind of a gloss of what that investigation entailed and what your opinion is as far as the expenditure of COVID federal funding?
Yeah, the biggest thing that the federal government has us to do is select a sample of the expenditures that were paid out and then pull the related contracts, invoices, purchase orders, whatever the backup documentation may be, and look at what the funds were spent on, and then compare that back to what the federal government said those funds could be spent on. So we selected, you know, the large samples, the largest expenditures, but, you know, they obviously get looked at. And there were no issues noted in that testing.
Because each one of these funds has very restricted guidelines on what it can and cannot be used for?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, during the training that we had for the North Carolina School Board Association, they discussed the DPI coming in and doing their own audits. Do you know anything about that? Could you explain that to the board as well?
Yeah, the biggest thing I've heard is that DPI will be making rounds to every district in the state to audit the federal COVID funding that was received. So I guess at some point, Ms. Jones or some superintendent will be getting notified that they're gonna be coming. I don't know how far they are along with getting those scheduled, but I have heard that they're gonna visit every district.
Will you have anything to do with that process?
No.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns for Dale this evening? Hearing that, thank you, sir, for the work that you put into conducting this audit. I know, and Ms. Jones and the entire staff in our finance building have to make their, themselves and their their place of business open for this. And we thank you for the continuation of a clean bill of health when it comes to finances.
Ms. Jones and her staff as well. We are quite a burden when we come in, and we ask for a lot of information. I know we're quite a disruption, but they're always very pleasant to work with, and I think they're doing a good job.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank y'all. Good to see y'all again.
At this time, we have the chairman's report. The chairman doesn't have a whole lot to report. I did have the opportunity, since we were last together, to attend the North Carolina School Boards Association annual conference. And that's an opportunity for members of all the boards of education in the state to come together and share information and have sessions and breakout sessions. You know what a conference is. And learn different things about what's going on in different school systems and how they are reaching achievement goals and so forth. And it was, it was well worth the time to go. I encourage anyone that has the time in their schedule to try to attend this particular conference. The general sessions were great. I would say primarily for entertainment purposes. Roy Williams was one of the keynote speakers, and he talked about kind of education from a coaching standpoint that often, that when you're the coach, everybody thinks that they're a better coach than you are. And so how do you maintain some integrity as you're pursuing your goals and your ambitions and trying to get other people to get on board with you? He did a fantastic job, even though I'm a old pack fan, I had to say. I had soft in Mr. Roy Williams. He's done phenomenal work at the University of North Carolina and well-deserved a retirement. But into the real business of what I was able to gain from the conferences, I got the opportunity to attend some, really had some breakout sessions. One of them was on, it was cited getting into gear through communication, marketing, and community partnerships. And I had the opportunity to listen to a district who really, during and after COVID, had tapped into community resources for everything from the arts to feeding people to you name it. And while I did gain some new insights into some things that we might be able to accomplish in our district, what really I came away with is how blessed we are to have the partnerships with Caterpillar and with Magneti and with some of these other industries in our area that not just accept our students for training, but also invest in our schools. You think of the Pfizer's and the Meritex and the work that we're doing to get these National Academy Foundation courses off the ground to train our students. And I think we're doing a pretty good job of marketing it out there that if we get the students prepared for the work, then the economic development takes off, the funding takes off, and that we, as a community, become better as a result of these good partnerships. And so while I did come out with some ideas for even improving that further, I also was just reassured and thought of how blessed we are to have a community of both industrial and educational and faith-based organizations that come together and really do support our school system. The second major breakout session that I went to was on building stronger family support structures at the high school level, specifically at a high-needs high school. This was presented by Kinston High School in Lenore County. And they talked about how parental involvement in their school had fallen so drastically. And it's something you kind of know, but at the same time, it's very eye-opening to think about in elementary school, parents are involved. They love to go do the class parties, and they're into the PTO, and they do the festivals and so forth. And that wanes a lot at the middle school level, and then it all but disappears at the high school level. Unless your child is engaged in sports, sometimes the parents just don't show up on campuses. And so that's what they were really trying to do. Their graduation rate had gone down, their performance rate had gone down. And so they made a real effort to get families plugged in with their high school. As a result, they found achievement went up, persistence went up, retention went up, and graduation rates went up. And so I have actually had the opportunity to speak to some of our high school and even middle school administrators and say, what can we do? If the parents are the key, and we kind of know that, then what can we do to further motivate that? So it's been opening conversations at across several levels in our district. Additionally, the delegate assembly. Additionally, the delegate assembly of the North Carolina School Boards Association, they were kind of reporting on some things happening at the national level. And the, it, it's like politics everywhere. And so the National School Boards Association was kind of coming under fire for some advocacy that were controversial. And so it was reported to the North Carolina School Boards Association that the North Carolina Association had disassociated from the National School Boards Association. And, um, there was approach for that based on some financial issues and some questionable financing, as well as, um, kind of an overzealous engagement in the political world. And so, um, with the blessing of the delegate assembly, that that disassociation was, um, was passed and was, and then after North Carolina did it, some nine other states have also disassociated from the national conference. Which also brings up, um, I was nominated by this board, through the Board of Directors of the North Carolina School Boards Association, and was sworn in as one of the boards director, board directors for the School Boards Association, and, um, will have the pleasure and the honor to serve on the Future Directions Committee. Basically, now that we've disassociated with our national conference, where do we go from here? And so I think that's a great foundational piece, that I'll have, um, the opportunity to work with other school boards associations from across the state, figure out how do we really rebuild from the ground up? And then the second committee that I've been named to is the Legislative Committee, where we will have advocacy for what are the, uh, goals of North Carolina school boards, and how can we work with our legislators and our senators in order to get, um, on the same page when it comes to goals, ambitions, and the things that we're gonna try to accomplish for our youth and for our communities? So I look forward to that opportunity. And then last but not least, I attended a breakout session on recoding our future, bringing computer science to students in rural communities. And, uh, it was a lot of grants that are available, and I'm gonna be sharing that information with our CTE folks. The North Carolina Department of Public Instruction had funded some, uh, pre-exorbitant grants to provide Apple products to all of their students in order to start a coding program in the middle school that is carrying them all the way to, by the time they're a junior in high school, they are, uh, interning and making pretty darn good money, uh, doing some coding. And, and this is in communities that you wouldn't automatically think as the keystone of computer science. So there's some opportunities out there, there's some money out there, and the more opportunities we have to give our students to find their passion and to find their success, I think the better off we all are. So I did want to report on, um, what I had done while I was up there, and, uh, I hope that through these continued relationships, we're able to build a better foundation to grow in the directions that we want to as a board, as schools, and certainly as a community. So I thank, uh, this board for sending me. Uh, thank you for funding it, for the opportunity, because I do think it, it pays dividends. Beyond that, um, I have nothing else to report on at this time. So Dr. Brian, I would call you to the podium for the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, congratulations on your appointment for board directors. Uh, this time I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward for Clean School of the Month.
Chair, board members, Dr. Brian, I'm very pleased tonight to announce that Broadway is our Clean School, um, winner for this month with a score of ninety-nine point five. That's pretty close. So, thank you. Ricky, would you like to come and collect Mr. Seacor and his team from Broadway Elementary? We welcome you to the front to accept your award and our thanks and our congratulations.
Chair, Madam Chair, congratulations on your reelections tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to celebrate three of our outstanding employees at Broadway. We call our custodial team the Clean Team. Um, they've been together for about a year, uh, come from a few different schools at the start of the last school year, and came back together at, uh, the time, um, we were returning the students, uh, last year. And, uh, they're a really great example of a team. Uh, we have a head custodian, you know, they all work together. No one says, that's not my job. If something's needed, a person that's closest takes care of it, and they do a great job. They're also, I'm proud to say, significant adults in lives and children in our school. They do make a difference in many ways, uh, though we're recognizing them for the Clean School Award tonight. Um, just want to also make sure that the public knows that they all drive a bus, they all matter a great deal to the student at our school, and we're proud of them for that. So I'd like to recognize Chris Chesley, Pat Kivitt, and Kelly Womack, our Clean Team. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the work you put in every day to provide a safe and healthy environment for our students. If we don't have safe schools, we don't have healthy students, and we don't have learning. So thank you for what you do for our district. Take your sign with you. And Dr. Brenner?
I'd just maybe have the others to come forward for the COVID report, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and board members. Um, so to bring you data tonight, which is the same, pretty much the same data I bring you each month, um, our total cases, positive cases for COVID in Lee County are up to nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five, which is an increase of three hundred and twenty cases since your last board meeting on eleven nine. The percent positive in North Carolina is nine point two percent, which is up from five point nine in November. In Lee County, if you look at the, um, the DHHS COVID, um, dashboard, we are at seven point eight percent, which is up from five, four point five percent in November. If you look at the CDC data, um, it's eight point seven four percent. So it's obviously elevated from where it was. Um, in Lee County, we have had three additional deaths from COVID since the board meeting in November. Our per hundred thousand, um, number is at three thirty-two as of today, which is up from a hundred and eighty-eight at the last board meeting. And those are all pieces of data that go into, um, the CDC's determination of what level of community transmission there is. And so for the past ten days, um, Lee County has been in high community spread based on the, uh, increasing data. Um, I've developed a, a spreadsheet just so I can be monitoring that based on the board's last, uh, meeting. Um, and so we had maybe a couple of days of moderate, and then it's, it was mostly substantial, and then for the past ten days, including today, it was high transmission. According to the CDC's data, there were six new hospital admissions, um, on today's, uh, data that they put out there for COVID. Uh, I've heard from staff at a hospital locally that their ICU is full and their COVID unit is full. Um, so. Um, the vaccinations, um, one real positive thing from last month is that, um, the information we provided for you last time for five to eleven-year-olds was that there were thirty-two who had tested, um, who had gotten at least one dose for the vaccine. As of today, it's up to six hundred and nine. So our parents have been busy hopefully getting those, um, younger children vaccinated. Um, and our twelve to seventeen-year-olds, um, are at two thousand ninety-four, which is up ninety-nine from last month as well. Um, so this will, uh, and that's just a one-dose, doesn't talk about those who are fully vaccinated. Um, we certainly have seen as we have been working, when we find positive cases and are having to look at family members who were positive or, um, if an exposure at school, we are finding, you know, a number of our kids are vaccinated to where they don't have to quarantine, because that is one of the criteria. Um, if you look at our dashboard for Lee County schools, um, as of today, the total quarantined students are at thirteen oh three, which is up two hundred from, um, last month. And the positive, um, number of, of students who are positive is at five hundred and fifty-five, which is up fifty-seven from last month. We certainly have seen an increase over the last, um, week or so, especially after the Thanksgiving break. For staff, the total quarantined are thirty and positives are seventy-six. And those, uh, the quarantine are, are not up, um, significantly, but certainly our positive cases have increased. Um, and some of that has been related to, um, even people fully vaccinated, um, who have had exposures from family members. Oftentimes, we see that.
Ms. Mary, can you, uh, clarify that for me? The staff, uh, quarantines is thirty, positive tests is seventy-six. That's a cumulative number?
Okay. So that's, um, so the, um, and, and so that, yeah, that is a cumulative number total. For this week, uh, we have, um, just this week alone, which is just two days' worth, we have quarantined thirty-one kids, and, and again, a lot, some of that has to do with families. We have whole families who are testing positive or who are, um, being, uh, you know, having to quarantine because of positive cases. Um, and that's, uh, and also, we have, um, had nine new positive cases in two days with, um, our students. And then for staff, so far this week, we've not had quarantined any, uh, we've not had any of our staff quarantined, but we have had at least one testing positive, and that will change tomorrow when we add today's data to that. So that's our metrics as of today.
Um, from the time the younger students became eligible for vaccination to now, um, I, I guess the question I'm really asking you is, how many weeks have passed? I, I should have had that date written down, and I have not.
Well, I, I think when you look at our data of how many were vaccinated, um, as of last month on November the ninth, and there were only thirty-two, um, that had just, the vaccination, uh, for students had just recently been available. And it took some time for our local, um, health department to get clinics get set up. Um, it took time for, I think the health department did their first clinic like the end of, of, um, October, uh, October twenty-second, I think, the day we did our booster clinic. They did their first clinic at the Civic Center, and, uh, they've got, uh, they've got another one scheduled for this Friday for a repeat for a previous clinic that they've done. Um, so I think at the time, um, when we had last month's meeting, we, we were, doctors' offices that were gonna give vaccines were just getting geared up, getting in the process. So I, I was very, um, encouraged by the fact that as of today, according to the North Carolina COVID dashboard, we had six hundred and nine five to eleven-year-olds who had gotten vaccines. So that's, um, a, a real improvement, but I think that's because we've got more options for them. Local pharmacies are giving vaccines to children as well, um, as well as, you know, some of the private providers. Not all of our doctors' offices are geared to giving the vaccine to children. It's a, um, it's, it's a, you know, different dosage and all that kind of thing, and not all of them are giving that. Um, what I'm really trying to figure out is if a parent wanted their child vaccinated, have they had time and opportunity to get the vaccine, both doses, and get two weeks post-dose? And, and we, um, we haven't really run into that with our children yet as far as vaccinated. We have run into that, of course, with our, um, older kids, that they've had, um, they've had their vaccine long enough to have been outside that two-week window to, to not have to quarantine if exposed from a variety of sources.
Any other questions for Ms. Mary or information? Hearing none, thank you very much. That concludes the superintendent's report. Excellent. All right, at this time, we'll move on to the committee reports. We've had, uh, a busy schedule for curriculum and instruction. Ms. Womack had curriculum instruction high school and middle school this month.
That's fun. Our middle school met, uh, on December the first, and we had an update, and they shared signs of the PE standards and schedules that was revised. Uh, we heard from East Lee Middle School, Stanley Middle School, and Wesley Middle School. And they, it was a consensus of the committee, which you will find on your new business audience as well, the plans have been put in place under the consent agenda. Uh, the high school met on the seventeenth of November, and along with that was Lee Early College. Uh, we went through some new courses, which is also on your consent agenda. I think somebody was very happy. Everybody was like, I wanna take all these courses that they have. Now, present plans were, uh, presented to the committee from Brexton Academy, Lee County High School, Lee Early College, and Southern Lee High School. Our next meeting for the high school is going to be on January the twenty-sixth at three thirty at Southern Lee High School Media Center. And our next meeting for the middle school is going to be on February the second at three thirty at Wesley Middle.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the Facilities and Technology Committee. Ms. Hilliard?
Um, yes, the Facilities and Technology Committee met on November twenty-second, and we discussed the soccer, uh, excuse me, the Southern Lee High School girl, girls' locker room bid. It was consensus of the committee to award the Southern Lee High School girl, girls' locker room bid to Compidium Contracting LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This item is on the consent agenda for tonight, um, and it will, the funding source is a twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one capital outlay budget. Construction is estimated to begin February twenty twenty-two. The next Facilities and Technology Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two at four thirty in the Hines Education Building.
Thank you. And that brings us to Finance. Ms. Sutton?
The Finance Committee had a special called meeting on December the eighth at four o'clock PM. Uh, the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the employee bonus plan that was presented to us by Dr. Brian, that has been recommended, um, by the Finance Committee for the full board and is under our agenda for, under new business. Also during that meeting, we did, uh, have a chance to review as FYI items, um, the board attorney's invoice, uh, August twenty-one, um, financial reports, and board expense summaries. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled to be on Thursday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at five o'clock PM at the Hines Building.
Thank you. And that brings us to the Policy Committee. Ms. Womack?
The Policy, uh, Committee met on the sixteenth of November, had a long list of policies, which we will get in later after, before, when we get to the action part. Uh, we went through policies on nondiscrimination on basis of sex, that appears to still be on here, uh, correct on development technology, went through testing assessments, student promotion, accountability, graduation requirements, student behaviors, attendance surveys, recruitment's, employees' dress and appearance, program administration, and annual independent audits. All of those came from the North Carolina School Board Association as being strongly recommended. Then we went through some others that they considered to be good practice, and those that were in reference to school safety, confidential information, children of military families, school assignment. Uh, and we're also gonna have the attorney Ross, who will review the additional language before this board meeting, so he may have some data for us on that one. Uh, and again, student dress code, visitor to the school, community use of facilities, and station and city transportation, use of student transportation services, and transportation service, physical contract, communal diseases for employees, and personnel files and planning to address, and so on. And there's also one more policy that will be coming up for open discussion, and that is ensuring dignity and nondiscrimination.
Ms. Womack, do you have the date of your next Policy Committee meeting?
Next policy meeting is scheduled for the fourteenth of December. That's today.
That's not quite right.
No, it's not on here. January eighteenth, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we'll go to, did I just lose my mic? Okay, it's there. Uh, at this time, we'll go to the action items on the agenda. We have the consent agenda, uh, before us. Are there any questions or changes to the consent agenda?
Moved.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, and need discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. At this time, we have the unfinished, this, this is the second reading of several policies that we looked at last month. Um, Mr. Smith, uh, Dr. Smith, I believe you have the list of those policies for second reading?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I would, I would make a motion that we approve the following policies. Uh, the following policy updates are required, which means they are either which means they are either required by law to be addressed by policy or the modifications must be made to ensure the policy reflects current law. Policy thirteen-ten slash four thousand two parental involvement. Policy twenty-three-oh-two remote participation at board meetings. Policy forty-one-twenty domicile or residence requirements. Policy forty-seven-hundred student records. Policy five thousand twenty-two registered sex offenders. Policy fifty-two-ten distribution and display of non-school materials. Policy seventy-one-thirty licensure. Policy seventy-five-ten leave. And policy seventy-five-thirty military leave. And that concludes that list, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee to approve the second reading of these policies. Is there a second? We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The policies are approved upon second reading. There we go. All right, at this time, we have the new business, the Employee Retention Bonus Plan. Ms. Sutton?
Um, we have, the Finance Committee has presented an employee bonus plan. This would involve all permanent full-time employees, certified and classified, within pay status, which would receive a two-thousand-dollar bonus. The plan would provide a tiered bonus for substitute teachers depending upon the number of days that they serve in classrooms. Substitutes will be paid depending on the number of days. Tier's will be in four classes, two thousand dollars, one thousand, five hundred dollars, one thousand dollars, and five hundred dollars. The funding source for this bonus plan would be the Edsor funding. Upon board approval, the bonus would be paid before the Christmas break. Any employees coming onboard through February first, two thousand twenty-two, would be paid in January or February respectively. Purpose that was discussed during our meeting for this bonus would be to show our value and appreciation for our employees and to work on retaining our employees during the difficult time that we have with COVID.
Okay. At this time, this bonus plan comes before us. Is there a motion? I'm going to leave County Board of Education approve the Employee Retention Bonus Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to discuss that, and I think I'm probably the only one on the board who can actually say this at sitting here today. There's a difference when you serve in the military, something called combat pay. And my only concern with this is we are providing bonuses to people who were not particularly in a combat-type environment. You're talking about administrators up at the head office. You want who makes over eighty thousand dollars a year. That seems like this is not very productive for our interstate. Our interstate is to be able to help our children and the people in this community to adjust after COVID instead of lining those pockets at their central office. Now, I know this is going to go forward today, and I'm very happy. Merry Christmas to everybody. We got a great bonus. But in the future, we plan to hand out part of this thirty million dollars that's came down from COVID. I highly suggest that we sit down and have a plan on how this should be done. And I can give you a perfect example, if anyone would like to look at. The last board meeting in Moore County, they had it broken down. From what went to the buildings, what went to mental health, and what was used to help the students within, and the people within this community versus a one-time bonus. There's multiple studies that also prove that bonus after bonus, and I know your quote said, you know, people can take a lot of crap if they pay money or something to that effect. I'm paraphrasing. But the reality is, people are watching. And you do have people who are on the front lines. And I do not believe that that part is fair, that we compensate all as a whole. You know, it's like everybody getting their participation ticket. That's all I have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The motion is approved. At this time, we have the budget calendar scheduled for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Dr. Bryan?
Madam Chair, the budget calendar we have in front of you is pretty much the typical timeline that we've followed previously. We have a predefined process that we follow according to law in order to get that budget recommendation to you for the board for consideration, so you then can make a recommendation or request to the board commissioner.
Are there any questions from the board regarding this schedule? Is there anything unusual or that has changed in this schedule? At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the budget calendar for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The budget calendar is approved. Ms. Womack, I believe you have quite a lot of policies for first reading. I know that there were a couple of policies that we had talked about pulling back to the committee. Do you want to address that first?
Well, we can either pull those back, or I would like for the attorney to address policy seventeen-twenty, forty-thirty, seventy-two-thirty-five, Title nineteen, not discrimination on the basis of sex.
There were two policies, Mr. Ross. And we talked about at the Policy Committee, and there was some discussion that the law already covers the changes that were being proposed in the policy and whether the policy was, it is a recommendation but not a requirement. And I think the committee split on this. I think Ms. Womack initially was in favor of, no, I'm sorry. Ms. Womack was in favor of not putting these policies forward, and Mr. Smith was. So that was one question we had, is if the committee split, being that this is first reading, should we remand it back to policy? Or should we just deny them on first reading?
I'd like to explain, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. As a policy chair, we have a requirement that we go through, and we go through every single policy. Now, this policy is by law. It's the federal law. And if you don't understand what I'm saying, I'll break it down very simple. You can no longer tell someone of the opposite sex they cannot go into a restroom. You cannot, you're going to tell a man not to go into the women's bathroom. This is the law. This happened last, you know, a few months ago. And our policy apparently said, you know, no discrimination on the basis of sex. And our lawyer said that that was okay, that that was within the law. We did not have to change it. The North Carolina School Board Association made a recommendation that we add sexual identity. They also added lawsuits at the bottom. So it's very simple for someone else who may have any concerns to say, you know what? I think I want three-point-seven million dollars because I no longer want to use the staff list. And that's why this became an issue, because I, as a chair, I concerned the policy was okay, the lawyer said it was okay, and that we were not in violation of it. But the North Carolina School Board Association and our chair wants to view, I mean, the vice chair wants to view what the North Carolina School Board Association said. I have no problem following that. But my biggest concern is, how are we going to implement that within our school system? How are we going to meet all that criteria? Because according to that policy, it states the handbooks are going to be changed, things have to be done on social media, we have to have it posted online. And then how would we accommodate that with our school system? Thank you.
I think that was the most chief question.
That was a whole lot. I'm going to do my best. And I'm a little slow moving with my computer these days because I'm not left-handed. But Ms. Womack, let me make sure I'm looking at the same thing you are. So I'm speaking directly to your questions. I am looking at policy code seventeen-twenty, forty-thirty, seventy-two-thirty-five, Title nine, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex.
And you're looking at the North Carolina School Board Association recommendation?
So what I am looking at right now is the attached material from the board agenda. It has yellow highlights, which relate to the changes that are before the board. And so specifically on page one, there is, excuse me, a new parenthetical following the phrase "does not discriminate on the basis of sex." That parenthetical includes including pregnancy, childbirth, sexual orientation, and gender identity. I believe that is one of the primary sources of your question. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and I'll come back to that one, because I just want to make sure again, I'm specifically addressing the concerns of the board here. There are also highlighted changes at the bottom of page two. One mentioning the Grimm versus Lobster County School Board case citation from the Fourth Circuit that decided last year. And then there's highlighted information on other resources, an enforcement guide from the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights that came out this year.
So can you give us a synopsis, the community, a synopsis of this Grimm case?
Yes, ma'am. So Gavin Grimm is a transgender male who requested to use a non-gender-specific bathroom at first and was provided a unisex access to a unisex bathroom, determined that he would prefer to use the men's restroom in the high school, was denied, initially was accommodated, and then was denied that opportunity and sued. That case has gone up and down through the federal courts. I will spare you the long timeline in terms of remands and reconsiderations. But the final decision of the Fourth Circuit came down last year, and it, the review of that has been denied by the Supreme Court of the United States, which means that for North Carolina, which falls within the Fourth Circuit, that is the law under federal law. And the decision of the Fourth Circuit was that discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of expressed gender identity, which means that if a student identifies as a gender that other people perceive as not their sex, that they must be accommodated within their gender identity as expressed. And so a student who may have been assigned the female sex at birth but expresses a male gender identity is permitted under the law to use the male bathroom. And denial of that opportunity, if they choose it, is discrimination under federal law under Title nine. Now, that doesn't mean they have to use that bathroom. So we, there are many students who would prefer not to. And they ask for access to unisex bathrooms, and schools accommodate that. But the law, the decision by the Fourth Circuit, which is binding on North Carolina and therefore is binding on this school system, is that if a student who expresses a gender identity that is different from their sex assigned at birth, that they are permitted to use the restroom that is consistent with their gender identity. So it is not, I think you said earlier, that anyone can use any bathroom, that there is a, there is a process that you can have that requests an identification, but it cannot be denied once requested for a student who identifies as a-
Do we have that process in our policy now?
Do you have that process? Do you go through? No.
No, we do not.
And it's typically a fact-based conversation. It's a sensitive topic. We often guide principals and schools to have that conversation, when to talk to parents, when to talk to students, how to involve everybody appropriately, so that sound decisions can be made and then enforced.
Now, there are other schools that surround us that actually have policies that govern that. I'm guessing if your law firm has worked with any of those as well. And let's make this very clear in a way. I'm about to shock everybody and your brother so y'all can be prepared to pass out of here. But I actually, my daughter is gay, and she's married to someone who's transgender. Also, now, I've seen abusive situations in restaurants. I'm not against that. What I am against is the fact that we have nothing in place to substantiate, adopt for this policy, that there's nothing that says with these changes that would protect us legally on how are we going to implement these policies with the stuff that they have? Could you make some of that a little bit?
Sure. So the first part of my answer was, in summary, for him and its effect on the law, specifically as to implementation of this policy, you have a federal obligation not to discriminate on the basis of sex. The Fourth Circuit, which has been now effectively left in place by the Supreme Court, so it is binding here, has said that discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of gender identity, whether you write that in your policy or not.
Correct.
So you don't need this parenthetical. If you don't want to say discrimination on the basis of sex means discrimination on the basis of gender identity in that definition, you don't have to write it in your policy. It still applies to the school because of the Fourth Circuit's decision. So as far as the terms in your policy, no, you do not have to add this language. You do not have to cite the Grimm case.
But it doesn't change the obligation to abide by the law.
But we have an obligation to be able to put out how we make that decision. For instance, other schools say at the start of the year, and there's a counselor involved, or someone from mental health or something, what processes do we have in place to be able to meet obligations of this policy if we pass it today?
In terms of your process, I am not aware of a formal process that's in place. And certainly, the board could exercise draft them. I would caution that to the extent a policy places an administrative burden that might discourage a student from seeking that accommodation in the first place, you could run into a discrimination claim on that basis. That is not to say you cannot draft such a policy, only that I would be cautious in how it is done, that it is carefully worded, and that there are exceptions made for exigent circumstances and for students who may say, I don't want to follow this policy because doing so will out me to my parents, and that's going to cause me potentially to be in a disruptive situation at home. So there are certainly concerns that we, but that, but there's no reason this board could not go into an exercise through the Policy Committee to try to put together a workable procedure going forward as long as there were appropriate exceptions available.
Okay. So you'd recommend us going back to policy as well? And maybe different avenues in order to be able to uphold this policy? Not that we follow our policies anyway.
I was waiting for the question here. Your original, the original question was, when the vote splits, what should the board do on first reading? And what I will say too, in good lawyerly fashion, is it depends. But let me offer a little bit more than that. The board itself can vote to give instruction going back to the Policy Committee to say, either we do or don't want to proceed with this policy, but we want a procedure first, for example. That would be absolutely appropriate for the board to do. The board could pass it on first reading and say it won't come back until the Policy Committee brings it back for second reading. And during that gap period, the Policy Committee can develop such a procedure that could come as a partner with it on second reading. You could also just deny it at this point, leave it as it is, and have the Policy Committee bring it back for an additional first reading with any additional changes.
Because there are two different policies before us with that same parenthetical. And so I felt like any decision made regarding seventeen-twenty would also affect policy seventy-one-hundred. It's the exact same parenthetical. It's that we do not discriminate based on whatever sex, com, you know, and then the parenthetical.
Pregnancy childbirth.
Right. And I think the initial intent was, when you say sex discrimination, most people think, well, you can't discriminate man and woman. But they don't often think about pregnancy as being sex discrimination. That if you just decide, you know, you're pregnant, I don't want to hire you because you're pregnant. That is, in fact, sex discrimination. And so I think it was more for informational purposes, but it has this secondary concern of, like Ms. Womack's bringing up, kind of implementation, kind of information. So anyway.
Yes.
And because the, because the committee split, what, when it's brought before our board now, do we just send it back until they come to an agreement or say, leave it alone?
So there would need to be a motion. And that motion, I think I gave you three options. I think we'd call those the primary three here. And we could invent some others. But, but the first one would be to vote to send it back to committee with specific instructions on a condition for bringing it back, such as please develop a procedure for how this will be appropriately implemented. It could be voted to send it back to the, I'm sorry, voted to pass it on first reading with instructions that we will not pass it on second reading unless there is an appropriate procedure that comes before the board at that time. And then third, you could just deny it at this time. You vote it down, your policy will remain the same until such time as the Policy Committee or the board brings it back.
So it would be your opinion that we would handle these two policies separate from the other policies?
To the extent the board continues to have concerns. The Policy Committee was split. The board may or may not be. But if the board believes that there's additional legwork that needs to be done to bring these policies so that everyone is comfortable with them, then it certainly seems to make the most sense to send them back down with instructions to address those concerns.
So, Madam Chair, I would recommend to us to at least consider taking those two policies, taking them back to the Policy Committee. And the Policy Committee actually have another subcommittee who have all people who is involved in this process to sit down and come up with a clear, concise plan before we change the wording. And since you say it's not illegal to keep it the way it is, I suggest that we keep those two policies exactly like they are until those steps are taken.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to remove-
Is that a motion or an explanation?
I was explaining, but that's okay. So I'll make a motion to remove policy seventeen-twenty, forty-thirty, seventy-two-thirty-five, and policy seventy-one-hundred to return back to the Policy Committee with further instructions before, before the board can-
Okay, so we have a motion to remove those from the long list. Is there a second? Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm kind of late here in the conversation, but I did not vote against these two policies.
No, I know you- No, I know you didn't. You voted to push them forward, she was for pulling, for not. You were-
These were approved at the, at the policy, at the committee level.
It went forward with no, my understanding was it with no, what's the word? Recommendation, there we go.
No, we approved everything on this list. The only thing we did not approve is policy-
Which is the next one on the list, right?
The new one that had, that was introduced. That's the only one that we did not approve. So these policies were approved at, at the policy committee level.
Okay, I was, I was under the impression there was a split decision there regarding these-
On those two policies-
At point of order, there is a motion.
Right, we have a motion on the floor to remove these two policies from first reading and send back to the policy committee, and we have a second.
Well, Madam Chair, I think the, the minutes, I have the minutes in front of me, the minutes indicate that these were indeed approved. Now, if we want to go back and change the minutes to reflect what we're going to do here, that's fine, but let's, let-
At what do we have a motion on the floor?
Just help me here. Regardless of the decision of the committee, this is first reading.
That's correct.
The motion is to remove these from the first reading.
Right, so irrespective of what the committee's vote was, there is authority to move to remove them first, from first reading. So I hear Dr. Smith saying that the minutes will reflect they were approved, there is still a motion to remove them at this point from the board's consideration and to send them back, that's been seconded, and so that's where-
That's where we are right now.
The merits of that motion would be the appropriate procedural step at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on removing these from the list and sending them back to policy? Hearing none, all in favor of removing these two policies from the first reading this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There, there is none. At this time, the policies, these two policies indicated seventy two, I am dyslexic tonight, I apologize. Seventeen twenty, forty thirty, seventy two thirty five, and seventy one hundred will be removed from consideration under first reading this evening, which leaves us with the remaining policies. Ms. Womack, if you want to-
The following policy updates were strongly recommended and are brought forward for first reading. Policy thirty one hundred, development. Policy thirty two twenty five, forty three twelve, seventy three twelve, technology responsible use. Policy thirty four ten, testing and assessment program. Policy thirty four twenty, state of promotion and accountability. Policy thirty four sixty, graduation requirements. Policy forty three hundred, state of behavior of politics. Policy forty four hundred, attendance. Forty seven twenty, survey of students. Policy seventy three forty, employee dress and appearance. Policy eighty three oh five, federal grant administration. Policy eighty three ten, annual independent audit. The, the next policies are the ones that were also recommended, but they were not required by law. Policy fifteen ten, forty two hundred, seventy two twenty, safety, school safety. Policy twenty one, twenty five, seventy three fifteen, confidential information. Policy forty fifty, children of military families. Policy forty one fifty, school assignment, attorney, had the attorney was going to look at that one, did you got something to add? It's good? Yes, sir, thank you. Policy forty one fifty two, unsafe school choice transfer. Policy forty three sixteen, forty three oh one, student dress code, and policy fifty twenty, visitors to the school. Policy fifty thirty, community use of facilities, and policy sixty three oh five, safety and student transportation services. Policy sixty three twenty, use of student transportation services. Policy sixty three forty, transportation service, vehicle contracts. Policy seventy two sixty two, communicable disease employees. Policy seventy eight twenty, personnel files, and policy nine thousand, planning to address facility needs.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the first reading of the policies? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The policies are approved upon first reading, and will be back before us for final disposition next month. That brings us to a new policy Ms. Womack has brought forth, policy thirty ninety slash forty ninety slash fifty ninety slash sixty ninety, ensuring dignity and nondiscrimination.
This policy was for reiteration, I had sent one or two before, for, I had the assistant superintendent with that, and the superintendent, there seemed to be some concerns, so I thought the best thing we can do is to find a policy that's already been approved in another school, particularly nondiscrimination policy that has been approved by the law firm that we have currently hired. So if you would, Mr. Ross, and if you have any concerns with this, this is, this was, well, you already know the background behind the other school and the law firm situation.
Yeah, from what I understand, I think as we have previously discussed, it is my assessment that there is nothing illegal about this policy, the board has authority to do this. As I've said many times, policy is not my gig, that's y'all's decision, but as far as a legal review here, the only thing that I have raised with you that I think Dr. Smith also mentioned in the committee after I had raised it, is that if there has been curriculum that has been approved by the State Board of Education, this board does not have authority to stop its teachers from teaching consistent with the state board's approved curriculum. So I have seen iterations of a policy like this, for example, that may say that specifically. This one does not specifically say that, and you don't have to specifically say that as long as it is understood that whether or not you say it, it is true. In the same way we were just describing the parenthetical in the previous policy, that the law does require that you adhere to the state board approved curriculum, and you could not punish a teacher for teaching consistent with that curriculum. So whether or not you choose to say that in this policy is up to you, I typically recommend it because of priority and transparency for the teachers who will be teaching consistent with that, but you do not have to.
Okay. So there's no legal implications not to pass this policy?
Implications, they brought from Minnesota and Poughkeepsie area.
Typical long, long-
I do, I do not believe this policy would be illegal as drafted.
Okay. And then my correction on it was, I go that you saw there.
Yeah, and I will note that the exceptions are key to my analysis here in terms of that it is very specific that a teacher cannot be punished for anything that would be protected by the First Amendment, and then the other additional exceptions in Section C there, I think are critically important for the legality of the policy, and that's where, if you chose to put a statement about the state board curriculum, that's where it would go.
So, I'm sorry, can we add implementation of the curriculum standards as developed by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and required by the North Carolina Board of Education? Amended to add item number four?
Under the C?
I'm sorry, Section C, add numerical number four, under C, nothing in this section, so we can see just prohibiting the following.
Is that a question for me?
You want a motion, you want a motion to amend it to include that?
All right, make a motion to amend it to add, under Section C, implementation of the curriculum standards as developed by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and required by the North Carolina Board of Education. So we have a motion and a second to amend the policy for first reading, standing the item number four as stated. Is there any further discussion on the amendment to this policy?
Madam Chair, I would certainly be in favor of this amendment, and this is the reason I voted against it in committee, is I want to be very clear where the authority lies in this issue, and obviously, our teachers are required by law to teach the curriculum as passed down by the State Board of Education, and if we pass a policy that is contrary to that, the state board clearly takes precedent, and thank you for that explanation, Mr. Ross, and having said that, I'd certainly be in favor of the amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the proposed policy to include an item number four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment to policy? Hang on, let me make sure I get the numbers right.
Should the motion say to approve policy thirty ninety, forty ninety, fifty ninety, sixty ninety as amended?
Correct, that's what I was trying to get to, is the numbers.
Well, that's the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor to pass policy thirty ninety, forty ninety, fifty ninety, sixty ninety on first reading with the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. This policy will then append to the previous policies available on first reading. At this time, we have contact tracing procedures, I believe this was a question that Ms. Womack had brought up, and then in her absence, we didn't get to discuss last month. Ms. Womack, can you address item number five, new business?
Yes. The reason I thought this was worthy of discussion is the Lee County students and staff deserve clarification and guidance. You know, it's time that updated COVID-19 protocol on contact tracing and quarantine students, faculty and staff. We have healthy students who are being negatively impacted by the positive cases. We have diversion of our school nurses and administrators to attend a contact tracing, which means these staffs are unavailable to perform their normal duties, ensuring healthy academic environments inside our school. The purpose of our public school system is to educate our students with the goal of making them career and college ready. It was never intended for us to monitor or track health status and needs of student families. Now, the reason I bring this up is there is a statutory, and we all like to talk about laws, statutory authority of managing contact tracing and quarantine, and that's done by the Lee County Department of Health, not our public school. Now, contact tracing is a health department function, and it's best performed by the health department staff, and it is clear that Lee County School, public schools does not have the authority to issue a quarantine. Now, in the beginning, I could understand this because the local health department had limited capacity to rapidly conduct all these investigations, because why? They're getting amazings, and they're doing shots. Our county has kind of died down a little bit as far as everybody rushing in to get shots, and I, and I believe that this contact tracing is taken away from our schools, where they, we need our nurses to be able to focus on what the nurses are really truly supposed to be doing, not contact tracing. And the examples I can give, there's simply because I have someone knock on my door to tell me there's headlights in the school. Nurses have a lot of responsibilities, and it's not just contact training, tracing, and we actually have a health department that's supposed to do that. And if we choose not to go that route, then I would, I would request, respectfully request, that there be a clear algorithm that the community, the students, and the faculty can, faculty could all understand how we're doing this contact tracing when we have someone that's called because they dropped off a child, and then go pick up somebody else's child. And to give you some history behind some of this, I would like to point out that there are several counties that have gone in that direction as well, because they're realizing that our children are losing basic education. When you send a child home for fourteen days because he has a headache, that's irresponsible. We're failing to do our duty, we are to educate particularly the most, the ones that it affects the most as special education children. So you tell them, oh, we gotta wear a mask, everybody wear a mask, everybody do this, come on into the school, but then if one person gets a headache, everybody goes home for fourteen days, until their parents get off of work, go in, get the children tested. And I don't believe that this should be something that our school should be doing. So I would request that at least full consideration anyway, I would like to make a motion that we move that the Lee County schools immediately stop COVID-19 contact tracing in its schools unless two positive cases come in the same classroom, bus or athletic team, and that students and staff no longer must quarantine after a possible exposure, not a positive, but a possible exposure to COVID-19 unless they have symptoms or a positive test. And I would remind us that under the North Carolina quarantine rules, students are exposed to COVID-19, are allowed to remain in school.
You have a, you ordered that as a motion.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm just hearing a motion. Okay, so we have a motion, and I'm going to ask you to repeat it just one more time for clarity.
I'm going to get the Lee County schools immediately stop COVID-19 contact tracing in its school unless there's two positive cases that come from the same classroom, bus or athletic team, and that students and staffs no longer quarantine after a possible exposure to COVID-19 unless they have symptoms or a positive COVID test.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's just got two parts, and that's what I'm trying to make sure I got all the pieces, that contact tracing would not occur unless there's two or more COVID positive cases in a classroom, bus or team?
COVID-19.
And that the staff need not quarantine unless they have a positive test. So, basically? Okay, that's the motion, we have them on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear Mrs. Oates' opinion on this.
Well, we do contact tracing because we want to keep our kids, our kids safe, want to keep our schools safe, and our kids can continue to be in the school building if they have not been exposed. We use several criteria, primarily this is the pages fourteen through eighteen of the Strong Schools Toolkit, and that is what we use as our baseline for when we look at contact tracing. You know, we, we have kids who are exposed at home, and they go home because maybe they're not symptomatic today, but within three or four days, they are symptomatic, and everybody in the household has tested positive, and if that child had been in the classroom while they were developing those symptoms and basically incubating that virus, then they potentially have exposed additional children to, and staff to the virus. Honestly, our health department is, they don't know our school, they don't know our classrooms. When we do contact tracing because of an exposure in the classroom, it is, it can be time consuming, and it is multiple people, it's not just the nurses, it's the administrators, whoever's in charge of buses, if we're looking at buses, we're looking at bus video, we're literally measuring classroom spaces to see who meets the criteria, which is again CDC criteria and the state's, and the Strong Schools Toolkit criteria for who, what an exposure is. An exposure is less than six feet for a cumulative fifteen minutes. If everybody's masked, then the only, the person that goes home is the child who, or the person who has tested positive for COVID. If they're, if they're vaccinated, fully vaccinated two weeks after their second dose, they don't have to quarantine. We have found situations where, I had a student that was exposed to a student in the classroom last year, and she went home for her obligatory ten days, because we go with ten days, and if they're asymptomatic at ten days, and they can return, and do need to continue to monitor up until fourteen. But she came back on day eleven, everything seemed fine, that night, developed a fever. On day twelve, she tested positive. So she had been back in the classroom, and she had followed the guidelines, so we know that children, and anybody who's exposed to COVID can develop symptoms up to fourteen days. If we have them in the school building and they develop symptoms, then again, the exposure to other people, you know, continues. What we're finding is, when we have students who are testing positive, particularly students, is that if the student is wearing a mask consistently and correctly, and those around them are wearing a mask consistently and correctly, we're not quarantining, we're not having to call the health department and talk about quarantining anyone. Where we're running into problems is, kids are not wearing their mask consistently and correctly, either the one who's positive or the ones who are in contact with them. We have had some lunch issues because just trying to find enough space to keep people six feet apart. I will tell you that honestly, I feel safer with us doing contact tracing because I know my school, I know my teachers, I know my classrooms, and I know my students, and I think, yes, it's, it's, can get kind of hairy at times, but I think we do a better job of, of looking at where potential exposures are. I don't want any, you know, we, we do know that, I've been on multiple webinars recently where the science is saying that children are bigger spreaders, so just because a child is, and I've had several this week who got tested because somebody at home was positive, they were asymptomatic and they were positive. So if they had not been tested because somebody in the household was, they were sitting in that classroom, and they were potentially spreading that germ, that COVID virus to other kids, to other staff members, so, you know, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect situation. So, you know, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect situation, but I feel safer in my schools that we are trying to make sure that everybody there is as safe as they can be.
You know, ma'am, with all due respect, we'd always be safer staying at home, but that's not our job. Our job is to educate children.
Right.
So here's some questions I'd like to ask you. First of all, is it true or not true that you have no authority whatsoever to quarantine your child?
We do not, but the health department does. In every situation that we run into with school exposure, we are contacting the health department, we are giving them the child's name who's tested positive, we are giving them the scenarios, lunch exposure, bus exposure, child won't wear a mask consistently, we give them the details, and we get the, and, and my question to the health department is quarantine per toolkit guidelines, question mark?
Yeah, because that's, you said the perfect word, it's called guidelines. So here are the three questions that I actually have to, so this is great. If in fact, we're going above the legal requirements, which we are doing, directed by the local health department, did the staff request add additional, additions to the contact tracing procedure? Did you send, or someone from the school send something to the health department requesting that anyone who has a child or a student or sibling, all in the same household, that they would have the authority to send them home as well?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so could the board?
That request came from a parent whose child was exposed, and she questioned the health department why we were not sending siblings home. That, that did not come from us.
She not sending siblings home?
Not now. Uh, that, that was descended by the health department just recently, several weeks ago.
Just recently, okay.
But in the height of when we were, when school began and we were seeing so many numbers of kids, again, a parent called the health department and said, why are you not sending, why are they not sending siblings home when there's somebody in the household who's symptomatic? And it was the health department who then said, we think that there's enough community spread that those other kids in the household need to go home.
My second question was, could the board be provided the exact directives provided by the health department that request coordination with administrators to coordinate with health officials to provide the contact information, and the requirement to notify close contacts of the suspected persons among staff, students, and families? And how do you explain non-family members being notified?
Well, what, I'm not sure I understand all your question, except to say that at the time that we were sending siblings home, it was also spoke to household contacts. So if there's a grandma in the home who is symptomatic, and this was actually when we began this process last year with the Strong Schools Toolkit, Strong Schools Toolkit.
We knew it's.
Uh, yeah, way back then, they were sending siblings home initially, and it also included household contacts. So if a grandparent who lived in the home was symptomatic, we were sending siblings home because that was directed in the toolkit. Then in the spring, when things kind of settled down a little bit, they took that out of the toolkit, and then, like I said, we were operating at the beginning of school with not sending siblings home, not sending, you know, household contacts home. So it was after the health department was concerned about community transmission that they changed, and they have that right, they have that by law, to make those kind of local decisions based on community transmission. And that's, that's spelled out in the toolkit, that's spelled out in.
Yeah, I understand the toolkit. You're talking to a 33-year medical officer from the Army. My question is, when we make these decisions, or you make those decisions, is that coming down from the health department? And I would like to see, and I'll repeat the question again, I would like to see what directives was given to you from the health department that allows those decisions to be made? Because we have parents that, that's calling all the time, or they're upset because they dropped a kid off, and they gotta, that kid's gotta be picked up, and everybody else in the school has gotta be picked up, and then they have a negative test, and then therefore you just, we have just denied four or five children, particularly when the toolkit changed in November, just recently, and the toolkit clearly states that in the North Carolina quarantine rules, students who are exposed to COVID-19 are allowed to remain in school if they have no symptoms. And my concern came from listening to the meeting, the last one, when someone came to make a comment, and they were concerned because a child showed in the classroom, and the mother had been getting tested for COVID, and they felt like that child shouldn't have been allowed to be in that classroom. They take COVID tests for a lot of reasons, employment, travel, et cetera, but without signs and symptoms, what guidance have you been given personally from the health department that allows us to do that?
And going back to when the health department, and I, I would have to pull the email, it came in an email from the health department, based on conversation with officials at the state, that the public health department had that authority to make a local decision to go back to sending siblings and household contacts home if somebody was symptomatic, somebody was being tested. Again, that has changed. I'd have to pull the email for you again.
Okay, you can take your time if you don't want.
Yeah, we're, we're no longer doing that, we haven't been since the health department sent us a follow-up email and said, because the transmission has improved, you are no longer doing that. We're not doing that now. If I look at a situation, I have kids in school right now whose parents are being tested, who's got siblings who are being tested, we're back to, the only time we're sending kids home is if somebody in the home is positive and they have been exposed to that, and that is outlined in the toolkit for one of those, if they're exposed, if they're within six feet for a few months to 15 minutes without a mask in a home situation, more often than not, they're not wearing a mask, and those kids are being sent home because of exposure at home. But again, if you've got somebody in the household testing, we are not sending children home right now. And again, I've got emails from the health department.
Okay, if you don't mind if it gets pulled over, that would, I would appreciate it.
Sure, do that.
And the last question.
Call the question, please.
Well, I have three questions.
At this time, you had a motion on the floor, we have a second.
No.
Dr. Smith requested to ask a question of this. Dr. Smith, has your question been?
Well, after all that rhetoric, what would be the net effect on incidence of disease in our schools if we pass this motion?
I think we'll be back sending lots of kids home with infection, with positives. If you look at other counties that have, you know, sort of backed away from some of that contact tracing, they're seeing numbers increase. And I, I, you know, I'm not the only, we're not the only schools that are doing contact tracing. In fact, most schools are. I'm on a monthly, at least monthly, lead nurse meeting for school districts all across the state, and nurses all across the state of North Carolina in school systems are doing the contact tracing rather than the health department, just because we know our kids, we know our school buildings, we know our staff, we can get to looking at a classroom. If I had to wait for the health department to come in and determine if there was an exposure, it would be several days before they would be there to look at it. And there's potentially more students who could be, you know, symptomatic or asymptomatic than having been exposed and, you know, and then giving it to other kids or other staff members. So I, I know we're not the only school district that are doing contact tracing.
Can you tell me the schools surrounding us, the ones that have stopped contact tracing? How do the numbers do?
Well, I know there was, there was one school district in the, towards the western part of the state that stopped contact tracing, and I believe Dr. Cohen stepped in and was going to provide a lawsuit if they didn't go back to contact tracing. I, I don't know, I don't know any school districts that aren't doing contact tracing because I was on a nurses' meeting with lead nurses last week, and we're all in the same boat, we're all, you know, expecting it to explode after Christmas because everybody's out visiting family and not wearing masks and being in larger surroundings and getting more exposure, and we're starting to see that with after Thanksgiving.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Are there any additional questions for Ms. Hawley? Because there has been a motion to call the question at this point. All right, at this time, the question has been called, we have a motion to cease all contact tracing unless there are two or more COVID positive tests in a classroom, bus, or team, and the staff would not be quarantined unless they test positive for COVID. Would you have a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, at this time, that motion does fail. We have the next item on our agenda is the review of the district's current plan for face coverings. As you know, at this time, our district has been operating under a mandatory face covering process, and we are required by state law to review this on a monthly basis. At this time, is there any discussion regarding the district's face covering mandate?
I came here tonight hoping I could make a motion that we would start the second semester in third quarter as option. And I still may make the motion that we start January 18th as option, but after hearing all I've heard in the last few minutes, I'm afraid that it might be possible, though we have another meeting coming now and then. But I still think from what we said last time, I know people are looking for an end date, but we're back in higher, back up to 8.7. I wish I could still make this question.
Mr. Kelly, it's encouraging to see that our FOB to February 11th was last month dead, if, if I'm.
Sure. We don't interrupt the activity of the board without first. Again, time and place, the public comments already ended, and if you wish to have public comment, I encourage you to come early and sign up.
Mr. Kelly, yes, I was seeing, it's encouraging that our page group 511, if I'm understanding correctly, we have 32 vaccinated, last meeting, and now we're up to 609. And I would, as much like to say that they make them optional in January, but I think we, I would follow Mr. Kelly's recommendation that we, with the numbers where they are today, pushing that vote to January.
I make a motion that we keep masks mandated until our January 11th meeting until we can get.
And the floor is open for discussion.
Uh, we are, once a motion is made, we'll have discussion regarding the motion.
Thank you, discuss it. Make me discuss it.
There's, there is a motion on the floor, we have not yet got a second on that motion, and then we will have a discussion regarding that motion. That is Robert's.
I said it was two discussions just now.
And, and the floor is still open for discussion, but a motion has been made. At this time, would you like to discuss the motion?
Yes, I would like to say that we, I think we're doing our students an injustice. You tell them to wear a mask, and I know some of you like these things, but I'm gonna tell you right now, these children we're watching in these classrooms, you're gonna send them home no matter what they do. You say you're not going to, that is a lie. That is a ball-faced lie. If someone comes up with any type of positive test, what is our parent's school doing? You know what they're doing? They're making teachers and nurses get on the, watch bus videos. Nobody care what was going on buses before, let's just find one that don't have that little mask on, just so you can pass that rule that says that's gonna happen. This is a disservice to our children. We are going to continue to see our numbers go down in the school, we're gonna continue to see violence, we're gonna continue to see suicide and depression until somebody decides to wake up. And you can say you're gonna pass it, you're gonna do it, I will remind you again, I have antibodies with COVID, no one in my entire family has those antibodies. My mother is blind, y'all know that, as the last one we missed, and we're all there together, so this is not making sense. And you decide to wake up, and I don't mean the kind of woke others are talking about, these are our children, and it is a disservice to them to having to be put on a mask, put in the buses, and then we picking our teachers and our staff and our nurses, and we're making them watch videos so we can pick one person that missed it. But guess what? You didn't have a problem at the parade, you didn't have a problem at the ballgame, you don't have a problem out in the malls and all this stuff. You pick and choose when you think it's convenient to wear a mask to make yourself look good. I'm sick and tired of the politics, it's time that we start standing up for our children.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to keep the mask mandated, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to keep the mask mandated pending the January meeting stands. At this time, I'll open the floor for board member comments. I'll start on this end with Dr. Smith.
Like the Madam Chair, I'll be brief, I just want to wish all of our staff, board members, teachers, all of our employees a wonderful holiday season. I'm delighted that we've been able to give them two bonuses made available through the Escher funds, and bonuses are nice. I'm really look forward to the time when our legislature will pay our teachers adequately. A 10% raise would be terrific in terms of establishing the value that we place on our teachers and our administrators, and my, my best wishes to the board.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I think you got it, echo everything out of Smith, just say.
I'm gonna last. Ms. Womack, you wanna go last?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Fielder?
I want to wish all of our staff a safe and happy Christmas. I do not like the mask, it's not my favorite thing, but until the toolkit, toolkit changes to take out the need for re-quarantine, if our children are not asked, then we do need to keep that because they're in the classroom because they're only sent home with that positive case and not sent home with symptoms. So that is something that I feel very strongly about. And nobody likes them, our subs are scarce, we start taking the masks off for those who are not vaccinated, we're gonna have more teachers that have to go home, we don't have the subs to cover it, we've already got teachers who are covering multiple classes during, during the day, they're missing their planning. So, you know, I think this is just in good faith, at least until after the holidays and that timeframe, to keep us safe. And once again, I go to what Dr. Smith said, maybe we can increase that, you know, get that salary increase, but I do hope the bonuses will help out. So thank you for everything that all of our school systems have done.
Mr. McCracken?
First of all, Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone. As I've said many times before, one of the greatest benefits of being in education, teaching for 30 years, is seeing what our kids do after graduation. It's especially pleasing in the last little bit, be on college campuses, at different companies, and in our community, seeing and talking to these students that have graduated from Lee County Schools, and hearing and seeing the success that they're having because of what is available to our students. So I continue to hope that I have these opportunities to see where our kids go after they've left Lee County Schools, and reiterate, happy holidays and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. And Ms. Sutton?
Yes, I'm Ms. Sweeney. Hi. At this time, it is my pleasure to serve, again, it's your chair, I'll give you this, if you wanted to go last, it is my pleasure to service the chair once again on this committee, and I believe that our goal is and always should be the proper education of our children. And at this point in time, any other objectives, any other vendettas, any other issues that are coming before this board really are secondary to the education that we provide in the classroom. And if we could get beyond a lot of the kind of secondary conversation, really focus on what is going on when our students show up every day, what they're learning in the classroom, and the achievements that we need to see improve because of the loss of education. I don't think there's anybody in here that would say that there has not been a loss of education through COVID, and that that should be the foundation of what we're doing, is teaching the students we have and bringing them back to where they should be and beyond, and to provide a platform where their goals and their aspirations can be achieved through the education they receive in our classrooms. Obviously, I want the masks to be gone, the sooner the better. But at this time, it is the opinion of the board that they stay pending the Christmas holidays, and we'll see where we stand when we come back. The best thing we can ask you to do is protect yourself, stay healthy, stay safe, and be ready to come back in 2022 with a new outlook, new year, new us, and, and let's tackle education in Lee County. And Ms. Womack, you are our final board member comments.
We as a board adopt policy. I'm the policy chair, I chair the policy committee, and in order to determine how we conduct business in a professional and efficient way, because of contract extension was not on the agenda, because there was no motion, was made through open session to add it to the agenda, and because it was sprung on the board with no warning, because it was discussed and voted on in closed session without the actual contract being available for review, that contract should be invalid. End of quote, Sandra Rowan, 2017, August of 2017. Same issues were brought up, we keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. For any of those teachers and students out there who may have been suspended or reprimanded for not following. For any of those teachers and students out there who may have been suspended or reprimanded for not following board policy, I would like to give you a few references. We'll start with policies that we apparently violated in order to do the superintendent's contract. Why is this important to me? Because the most important thing we do on this board is to hire that superintendent to set those goals, and we are required to do that. And it's very obvious what happened here. Anybody who's paying attention in this county knows exactly what happened. We have a superintendent and a policy code I want to reference is seventy-four twenty. It says, "After the members of the board have an opportunity, opportunity to review the final written document." There was no final written document. It was not put in the FYI packet. Anybody who says that you want to look at it, it's a blank document. It says it will include the executed written document as an attachment. Never happened. Any subsequent provisions are extended. The board members must have the opportunity to see that final written document. It also says that it will be pre-audited by the finance officer. Never happened. It says a written consent from the superintendent must come before the board as well. Never happened. Our agenda, guess what our agenda said? It said we are having an informal evaluation of the superintendent. However, our policy clearly says that you can extend it during an annual evaluation, not an informal evaluation. The other policies that we are in violation of have, there was four different ones that were all in violation of, and it's interesting because these are the exact same ones that's been brought up three times in a row. Policy number twenty-three thirty-five entitles advanced delivery of meeting materials requires that all the materials be delivered to every board member four days before. Did not happen. Policy number twenty-three thirty requires that the agenda be published. Nowhere on that agenda will you see the superintendent's contract. It was never put on the agenda, and there was never a motion to add it to the agenda. And those of you that may be interested, I highly suggest you go to August of twenty seventeen, and the exact points that I'm providing to you today are exact replica copies that was provided by my chair to the parent chair at that time. The other policy was seventy-four twenty.
That is your three minutes.
Well, you have the four policies. Call me if you need to.
Thank you. All right. At this time, um, we have a motion for closed session. I'm sorry. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'm the Lori County Board of Education. Go into closed session under NCGS one four three dash three one eight, eight dot one one A one and A three and A six to discuss confidential student information under NCGS one one five C dash four zero two to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS one one five C dash three one nine and one one five C dash three two one, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We remain to closed session.
Open session, I will say that we have one quick thought. Our attorney has alerted us to one staff who in the original closed session motion. There is a portion of our closed session this evening that involves the review of the confidential portion of our school improvement plans. And because the closed session as it was reported at the table did not specifically mention that, we will be going back into a second closed session to handle that. However, the other portion of the closed session is complete and we'll go ahead and have that motion momentarily. Mr. McCracken, I believe you have the one regarding personnel.
Yes, I make a motion, the county board of education approved the human resource report as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, the human resources report is presented, is approved. And as I said, it's simply a matter of procedural conduct that there was one element of the closed session motion that did not include the school improvement plan confidential portion. So Ms. Hilliard, if you will, make that motion amendment. Or motion, no motion, not amendment.
I make a motion, then we go back into closed session to review the confidential portion of the school improvement, the safety, the school safety components of the school improvement plans and to maintain attorney client privileges. Under GS 143, 318 dot 118, A8, A3, and 115C, 105 point 27.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none, at this time we'll return to closed session for the discussion of school improvement plans, safety components. I did want, just upon the reminder from Mr. McCracken, I'd love to invite everyone to join us for the dedication of the Jimmy L. Love Senior Board Room of this Thursday. From 4:30 to 6:00, will be a great time honoring someone who gave this district a great deal of service. At that time, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, none, thank you everyone, have a lovely night.